At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners' October meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. We've got some visitors in the crowd. Good to see everybody. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Sharp if he would to lead us in a moment of silence and the bell, please.
Amen. (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You'll be interested in knowing, one of the U.S. prosecutors dogged within the background today on the news conference.
It's fine. It's fine. Just a reminder that we're a pet-friendly board. At this time, are there any additional items for the agenda?
Madam Chair, I would just respectfully request removal of Item H under the consent agenda. When the bids came back last Thursday, they came in over budget, so the General Services Department is working on value engineering, and we'll bring that back to the Board at a later date.
Okay. All right. There's Item H under consent. Okay. Any other additions or changes to the agenda? Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to be approved tonight's consent agenda.
Okay, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll go into public comments. Ms. Keely Wood.
Good evening.
Good evening. Keely Wood, Angel Road, Sanford. In a poll done by Elon University and the News &amp; Observer, it was found that four out of five North Carolina teachers think it's a bad idea to allow guns in the classroom. This percentage, 80%, is the same conclusion of the poll done by Lee County, showing that government employees don't want guns. No guns are allowed inside post office buildings. This ban was labeled as a "sensitive place," end quote, where guns can be legally banned beyond the federal court buildings, national cemeteries, and prisons. It got me thinking, are post offices more sensitive than child services? Do post offices have a higher emotional conversation than family services? But yet, post offices are deemed a "sensitive place" where guns are not allowed. Starbucks, Kroger, Target, CVS, Walgreens, Wegmans, Chipotle, Panera, I could go on, Walmart, are all write something similar about not allowing guns. We believe this strikes the right balance between creating a friendly, caring, and welcoming environment for associates and for customers in our stores, and respecting abiding citizens. A welcoming and caring environment. Bringing firearms to Target creates an environment that is at odds with the work experience we strive to create. It was shameful, at the last BOC meeting, how the BOC disregards their own local government employees. Snarky comments, disrespectful comments, and bullying was out of line. 80% of the employees don't want guns in their environment. This BOC is making decisions that directly affects them. Think about that when you vote.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Okay, moving on to our old business, will be the second reading of the modification to the Lee County Code of ordinances to allow concealed carry of handguns on certain county properties. Commissioner Dodson.
Yes, once again, the draft that was proposed, I know our first reading, we voted to along with that, and Madam Chair, I would suggest that we have our second reading and vote to approve lifting the current restrictions on concealed carry.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
I have a few things I'd like to say. Thank you to those who spoke today. Thank you for sharing your concerns and your experiences and making your voice heard. That's important. This is a sensitive topic, and it's one that evokes a lot of emotions. But I can't make decisions based solely off of emotions. As a sitting county commissioner, I have a responsibility to follow the law. We all do. I also have a responsibility to follow the Constitution. And since 1787, the Constitution remains very clear on this issue. I care about our county employees, and I would never want them to feel uncomfortable in their place of work. But I have a responsibility, not just to our county employees, but to all of the citizens that I represent. This ordinance is not outside of the law, it's not unreasonable, and it's not extreme. It simply allows lawful paying tax citizens who have taken the initiative and the time to complete a course, to complete a background check, and to become registered with our sheriff, the right to protect themselves in county-owned facilities. If an evil person intends to kill, they will not hesitate to break any and all laws prohibiting it, whether it's with a gun, or a knife, or a bat. A law in a book and a sign on a door will not stop a crazed individual that is intent on causing harm and destruction. Horrible, evil crimes can and have happened anywhere, at any time. They've happened in gun-free zones, and they've happened in areas where guns are allowed. The difference is that in any of those areas where law-abiding citizens are prohibited from defending themselves with the best tool possible, a legally concealed handgun, they become unnecessary victims with no chance. And I believe, along with the founders of this great nation, that everyone has the right to protect and defend themselves, along with the lives of their family and innocent bystanders. Not just a right allowed by the Second Amendment, but a God-given right to self-defense. We cannot strip away the rights of our citizens, and this is why I support this ordinance. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to comment also. First off, we're not making it available to schools. That's up to them. But the ban at post offices, unfortunately, there's an old hideous phrase called going postal, is where when someone goes on a mass shooting spree. And for those that aren't aware, the overall department responses to questions, one question was, if the county coordinated concealed carry classes or handgun safety classes for employees, would you pay a fee to take these classes? Forty-eight point two percent said yes. Twenty-four point eight percent said maybe, which is a total of 63% of the 234 people who responded to the poll.
I'd just like to comment too. Ms. Wood, I mean, I appreciate you coming forward, and I do respect your comments and your opinion. You're entitled to that. But, once again, as a sitting commissioner, it's not about my agenda, but I feel like I'm, well, I feel like I am, I'm a voice for the public, for the citizens. And remember now, these folks that have a concealed carry, I mean, they've gone through extensive background checks, much deeper than what it, the background check that you have to go through to get a regular gun purchase from it. And they've also been checked as far as their mental health goes as well. So what I would just say is, is that we, I think, believe we should trust, we should trust these law-abiding citizens to be responsible with firearms, because you're exactly right. There are people out there that are very irresponsible with firearms, and I don't condone that at all. But I do respect your comments, though.
Call questions.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay.
Madam Clerk, let the record show that I support 80%. I oppose 80% of the employees.
Myself as well, as before. And we'll address that again later in commission comments. The next item of business, consideration of a zoning map amendment. Ms. Downe, hello?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the board.
Good evening.
As you indicated, Madam Chair, this is a recommendation from the planning board. You may recall, Ms. McNeil did give you an extensive staff report and overview of this request at your last public hearing meeting. Just as a refresher, it's 4.02 acres of vacant 6.7 acre tract located along Broadway Road. Basically, the applicant is Stephen Chase Johnson of L&amp;K Properties. I believe he's in the audience tonight, and I believe he spoke at your public hearing. But essentially, straightforward, the planning board did recommend unanimously that you do consider this rezoning from the current RA to HC. And like all rezonings, you have to take two votes. You have to make a vote on the consistency with the long-range plan, as well as a vote on whether or not to approve the rezoning or deny the rezoning. On page, beginning on page 57 of your packet, is an ordinance for your consideration, and there's also a page, a packet, on page 59 of your packet, an exhibit that shows the map of the area. And I'll pause there, Madam Chair, if there's any additional questions.
Any questions from Mr. Downe?
To approve that it is consistent with the rezoning.
Okay.
Long-range plan.
Okay, there's a motion that it is consistent with the long-range plan. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and is there another motion?
To approve.
Okay. Any comments or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty. All right, moving into new business. Our Lee County Post 65 Retiree Health Insurance Plan renewal. Hey there.
Hello. Good evening, members on board.
Good evening.
I'd like to propose that our current Post 65 retiree health insurance plan then remain the same for this year, in this with Edna. The Edna plan is a Medicare Advantage plan that works in addendum to Medicare Part A and Part B plan, and those are for our employees that have attained the age of 65. To qualify, an employee must have been hired by March 1st, 2010, for this plan. After March 1st, 2010, our employees are not entitled to this plan. We changed the rules. The current plan is $286.40 per month, per retiree, and the cost for 2020 will increase to $335.65 per month, per retiree. Currently, we have 93 people in the Post 65 plan, and we have one that's just going to enter in 2020. The annual cost will be $4,027 per retiree. If we do away with the Post 65 plan, the cost would be $7,337.68. So I would ask for you to approve for us to use Edna again, and this amount. We did budget for this, it is in our budget.
Move to approve.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Choice based on what I was looking at, nothing changed as far as their benefits. Everything copays and all stays the same.
And our employees are really pleased with this plan.
Yeah, it's a really good plan.
It's a good plan.
Yeah, okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. Our next item is the 2018 Community Health Assessment and Top Three Health Priorities, and Ms. Lauren Stens is going to be here to give us this great information. It's a good report. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
So, we have completed our community health assessment. The community health assessment is done every four years. It takes about two years to develop this assessment. We have a lot of opportunities to improve our community's health based on our top three health priorities, which are teen, pregnancy, obesity, overweight, tobacco use, and substance abuse. We will use all of this information from our community health assessment to build our community action plan, which will be used to strengthen all of the weaknesses in Lee County. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I do have one question regarding the Page 75, substance abuse, and it said here that in 2018, there were 1,137 visits to the emergency department due to substance abuse. Did we define them, those individuals, as Lee County residents, or Harnett, or Moore, or Chatham County, seeing that Central Carolina community hospital's centrally located?
They were just sent to that hospital. They were not defined in certain counties.
So this kind of inflates our numbers.
Possibly, yes.
Okay.
Well, I think, where is it? There is, I just saw it.
I thumb through it.
Yeah, we had a capture, though, because that was one of the things, I know, don't mean to put you on the spot, but, you know, here it is. When, you have the table on Page 102, it's sort of the data from the hospital use, it's that long chart with all the different reasons why. And I think, Commissioner Smith, you know, kind of to your point, I was kind of looking at that, to, you know, we're talking about the opioids, you know, we're so focused on that right now with the litigation. That does at least break down with the poisonings and things, but is there a way in this data that we can capture Lee County citizens? Sorry, Lauren.
I can speak with the hospital and get that information. I appreciate it.
You know, I just, you know, but at the same time, with it being our hospital, it's important for us to know how many people are going there regardless of where they come from.
Yeah, the total is an understandable number, it's just that it makes us look bad when these individuals are coming from other counties, because it's closer in proximity than to, you know, send them to Silo City or somewhere else.
We can definitely get that. We had worked with them to get the numbers we had. I don't know that we broke it down individually, or they broke it down, or if they get us. My understanding was it was just the visits that were made based off that, and the original information we received.
Yeah, and one of the things that I think, and it's interesting, we're having a regional conference here the next two days, starting tomorrow, but the thing that shocked me so much, when you're looking on Page 116, when you start talking about the health care available, you know, in Lee County, and it compares us to Chatham, Harnett, and Moore, obviously, Moore's doing better because they have a regional hospital, they're a large regional hospital. But when you stack us against Chatham and Harnett, just, well, I mean, you know, we have twice as many physicians as Harnett in Lee County, almost three times as many physicians as Chatham, and then it kind of goes, you know, down the line to where, I guess, to your point, Commissioner Smith, it makes sense that we have a lot of people from other counties come to our hospital, because they don't have anywhere to go where they are, and that's the problem a lot of counties are having right now in the state, so.
And we have the same problem with prescription drugs.
Yeah. Hand in hand.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we have 9.45 pharmacists per 10,000 population, where Chatham has 6.28. You know, it's statistically, you know, okay. Anything else? Any questions for Lauren?
I've got one on weight, and it goes directly to both the Health Department and TSS with food stamps. I don't know how many people in here try to eat healthy, and that's pretty expensive. So one of the questions that comes to mind when it comes to food stamp, is whether or not we've done any type of assessment to see just how much healthy food can be bought with an average.
This is all TSS.
It'll take you long to get out of there.
Stay close, Lauren.
Now, I'm not really looking for an answer, but I'm making a point here, that we constantly talk to people about eating healthy.
It's an interesting concept, and it's not something that DHHS, from the Food and Nutrition Services standpoint, ever addresses.
Right.
So we address those key factors of nutrition in programs like WIC, which are excellent programs to promote nutrition, but they do not do that. It's all about eligibility and the amount that they're eligible for.
I agree, and that's the point that I'm making. At some point in time, there should be a study made on just how much healthy food you can buy with five hundred dollars, or one hundred dollars, or whatever the case might be, depending on the size of the family, I would imagine, but.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Because sometimes it's very unfair to criticize people about the way they eat when that's all they can afford. And that's the only point I make. I know you're not doing it.
While we're on that subject, there is a movement afoot, at least in the state, in our state, thankfully, with cooperative extension. And if we can get our DHHS departments and our Health Departments to work with cooperative extension, and, you know, they have a lot of good food and nutrition programs. We just need to do that synergy and that partnership thing that we talk about so much around here, and with those three departments, and see if we can't come up with something here in Lee County, you know. Somebody's got to do it first, so maybe we could, we're small enough, maybe we can work on that. But that, but Robert, that is something that's being talked about with the cooperative extension folks. Yeah, so.
It does not need voting.
Okay, okay, just for information.
Yes.
Okay. Well, one of the things, a couple of things I did want to point out was, you know, we look on this, and yes, I think the key things that we're focusing on are important, and certainly something that we need to be concerned about. One of the things that I thought, just to sort of pat everybody on the back for a job well done, you know, when we were looking, if I read it correctly, Lauren, if I did my homework right, you know, when we were looking, our death rate as far as heart disease, with our peer counties, we were lower than four of the five other peer counties. So that's definitely moving in the right direction. For chronic lower respiratory disease, we were the lowest of all six of the peer counties. For kidney disease, we were lower than four out of five of our peer counties. And then as far as pneumonia and flu, we were the lowest of six. So I just want to say thank you, because looking at that data, it shows that our Health Department and our medical community in the county seems to be doing a good job compared to the other peer counties. So just thank you for that. Appreciate it, yeah.
Lauren and Ashley before.
Yeah, thank you very much. And, you know, that shows that that information's getting out, and people are trying to get healthier, so we're moving in the right direction. Thank you so much, both of you. Okay, consideration of a major subdivision, preliminary plat for the Winstead Farms, phase five.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is pretty straightforward. I would direct you to page one fifty-eight in your packet. You should have a copy of the plat. This is essentially, it's called Phase Five, it's part of a, over the years, a number of lots have been created, but essentially, what you're being asked to consider tonight is four lots being asked for by HWW Properties. If you look at that map on page one fifty-eight, I believe I referenced in your packet, you'll note that existing, so if you're looking at that, it's a little bit complicated. Lots one through five were already created in a prior action under a minor subdivision plat, so they were actually approved by staff, because it allows that. However, lots six through nine no longer qualifies as a minor, just because when you add that many lots, it needs to go in front of the board for your blessing. So that's what you're actually considering tonight, just to be clear, is lots six through nine. If you'll note also in the staff report, there's a few lots also just to the east, northeast of that, that you see on that map, those are actually, part of those lots are in the city's ETJ, six, seven, and eight, I believe it is. So you all have to approve this, as well as the city of Sanford. It went in front of the city of Sanford last week, and the planning board recommended to the city council that it be approved. This came in front of you all with your planning board, and they recommended that you approve it as well. It is served by public water, city water. It is, does obviously have access to public streets off of St. Andrews Church, and would be served by easements and driveways. And I'll pause there, and of course, it is on, it will be on private septic systems. And they had a licensed soil scientist look at the properties to make sure that they felt like there's enough land there for a septic system to work. And I'll pause there, Madam Chair, if there's any additional questions.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Was it two votes again? I'm sorry, sir? Need two votes again? No, just one.
Because it's already.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I spoke with Amy last week about the proposed development we have coming to Lee County, hopefully.
Yes, sir.
Specifically, the one where there may be as many as nine hundred and ninety-five units.
Collin Road.
Your department prepared for that sort of building expansion?
Yes or no?
I figured that part.
I gave him the same answer, Martha.
Yep.
Yep, I mean, the reality of it is, is, yes, we are prepared in the sense that we know how to guide the folks through it and do those kind of things in terms of volume. Inspections is more of a concern, and we've had that conversation with the manager, and we're working actively, you know, to kind of address that. So we'll feel better, once I get those people in place, I'll be more confident in that answer. But no, from a development standpoint, there's a lot of things happening there. Number one, it's a staffing issue. Number two is, how do we update our codes and ordinances? You all approved the land use plan, which is a huge step forward. We're kind of working right now with mainly the city, because it's more of an urban issue, to try to update our development codes, to address those kind of design standards and things like that. So there's a lot of steps that we need to be doing as we kind of move forward with this.
And that doesn't take into account the industrial development that's taking place?
Yes, sir, and so, yeah, and that's why I say it goes back to more of having boots on the ground for inspections and things like that.
So you all are working on that now?
Yes, sir, absolutely. The challenge, and I've heard the manager tell you all this, and I'll echo exactly what he says, there's a limited pool of resources out there you can tap into, and we're doing the best that we can to get them, to get them here.
I heard the Human Resources Director say that people are paying more, and folks are going different places.
Paying more, and specific to my need in building inspection, that's a very, you know, a lot of people have this misconception, you can go out there and hire a contractor who's been doing it for thirty years, and hire him as a belt level three inspector. It doesn't work that way. They've got to go through seven years of training, no matter what their experience level is, to get that certification.
The old adage, be careful what you ask for.
Yep.
You just might get it, now we've got it, and.
And so, yeah, and so, you know, again, you've got a talented, a limited amount of people, you can tap in to do that.
Right.
We've got to go get them, so we're on it, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, manager's report. First, the financial report, Ms. Mentor. Good evening.
Excuse me, one minute, Madam Chair, let me make this point. The one thing I mentioned was the small contractors.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to see them get pushed to the rear every time we have a big development come through.
And absolutely, we understand that. I mean, you know, this whole department's been built on that customer friendly.
That's right.
No matter what size projects, we understand that.
Right.
You know, again, that's our concern, and that's what we've been kind of working with the managers, both the city and county, to make sure we keep enough people there that we can keep that, keep that standard.
Thank you.
Good evening. Do you have before you the financial report through the month of August, twenty nineteen? Just a reminder, the sales tax runs three months behind, so we've not received any this year so far that belongs in this year. Tax collections as a percentage of budget through August twenty nineteen are about one percent behind the same time period last year. Not concerned yet, that's probably just timing of when people are paying their bills. In reviewing its finishers, the percentage used target is sixteen point six seven percent. As you will see on here, media, our departments are above that due to the payment of HSA deposits, annual insurance premiums, and dues, maintenance agreements, et cetera, paid in the month of July. Also, the inclusion of the encumbrance columns skews that number. You will see it balance as the year moves on, and I will be monitoring it with that encumbrance also. You'll see a few departments are at twenty-five percent use, those are quarterly appropriations, and they're not of concern at this point in time. We'll land it, any questions you may have?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Crumpson?
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple items. One item is, I'd like to seek approval from the board to ask the city of Sanford to review the pedestrian crossway out here on Hillcrest. Had some issues with employees and some citizens and traffic, and, you know, there's been a request by the risk manager for the county to try to take a look at that and make it safer, so. We're not in control of that road, that is the city of Sanford road, and so anything that we do there, we'd have to do in coordination with them. So I'd feel better if the board would make that request, that the city review it, and make recommendations to improve that pedestrian walkway between here and our parking lot.
So moved.
Any questions or discussion on that from the board? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
And just to know, it's not the first time that they will look at it, so. We, I'm sure we'll meet again, talk about it. The rest of my report's really about meetings. The airport terminal meet, grand opening is Thursday, ten ten, at five thirty. Encourage board members to be there to tour the new facility, it's quite nice. Also, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, Brick Capital has a new executive director, and they invited the board and staff to a nine o'clock coffee to meet the new director, and I forgot to write his name down, but.
Kerry Bradshaw.
Thank you, that's it. And so, if you can make it, that'd be great. The city has invited us to the new Kiwanis Family Park opening on Friday, the eighteenth, I think that's a Friday, and that's at eleven thirty to one o'clock. If the weather's warm, I'm sure they'll be looking for volunteers to get hit with the bucket, so. I encourage you all to wear your bathing suits that day, if it's warm.
The mayor said something about that.
Yes. Two weeks from tonight, at five o'clock PM, Taryn Little with RSNH will be here to go over the airport master plan and how that relates to the overlay district that was before us. So you have your homework in front of you, which is, this is the airport's master plan updated, which was just approved a couple of months ago. So in the back are the fancy maps and glide paths and all that fun stuff that she'll get to explain to you, and why it's good to have low density, not high density development around the airport. So that was a request by the board, and it just seemed a convenient time to be able to get the planning board and the board together for, you know, a little hour discussion on why that is important. That's it for me, Madam Chair.
All right, can we share comments? Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chair, on the twenty-seventh of September, we had a graduation for the crisis CIT teams at Emergency Services Center. Had thirteen officers from both the city and the deputies from the Sheriff's Department. I want to say thank you to both law enforcement agencies for supporting it. And we did have one probation officer there.
I wouldn't.
Just encouraging you, but it went very well. They were, their minds were definitely open to different aspects of how to deal with individuals who are in a mental issue that will hopefully reduce the threat to both the law enforcement officer and the individuals.
Okay.
Yes, as a representative of SAGA, as one on our board, me and Mr. Dodson, I just want to say thank you to everyone for the hard work. I know the manager went through a lot of work on this last project, Forge, and the same could be said with the Pfizer project as well. And I'm just proud of everything that staff done, the manager turned, I know she's sat in on some long calls, we both did, and we thank you for that, and I'm excited about the economic growth that is coming our way.
I'm good, thank you.
Well, it's October, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and just thinking of the women and the men who have beat it, who are going through it, and who have loved ones who have passed on. So my thoughts and my prayers with those family and those warriors that are fighting right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ray?
I'd like to ask the manager to check on the spec building, unless he already knows something going on with it today, and maybe refresh at least my memory on how that works. If they sell anytime soon, what do we recover?
We haven't paid them anything yet. They have not made a request. They could make requests for payments back to July first, but they have several clients that are interested in the building, and they're confident that it's going to sell. So we, you know, and that's not a recruitment type contract we have with them either. So if we're paying for the, you know, the holding costs, or, you know, that's just part of the deal that we made with that. So we have a hundred and forty thousand, I believe, budgeted for this year, if I'm correct.
That's why I'm trying to get some clarity. I was of the opinion we did three hundred and some thousand.
We committed to two years, which was close to three hundred thousand.
Okay. All right, and they haven't drawn down anything on that?
They have not.
You anticipate they will, if they?
I think they're hoping that they're not.
I'm hoping that too.
They, I believe they're, they believe they're close to having a contract on that building, but that's about all I can say, because I'm not involved in those negotiations. It's not our building.
Let me put up the juice. Thank you.
A couple of things, getting back to an earlier agenda item. After the concealed carry vote tonight, Dr. Crumpson, we had talked about the new signage that'll be posted. Will we see that as a board prior to it being posted?
I could probably have it for the twenty-first meeting, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We've been, we've been working on it, and so I'll get with General Services and Ms. Gamble, and we'll, we'll try to have something for the twenty-first agenda.
Okay, just to make people aware that there will be new signs posted. And also, we talked about talking to Mr. Kavasket about doing some type of map that we could put out on social media and all about the buildings that are allowed and not allowed. Have we got that yet?
No.
Okay, all right, well, okay, just a reminder. And just a couple of discussion questions. And I'm getting some of these, you know, from conversations with citizens and employees on this issue. One of the concerns is just, you know, when we're talking about, as Commissioner Dodson and Smith have said in prior conversations, you know, about people with concealed carry having training, you know, and the point that is made to me over and over again is, you know, the difference between myself, who is not taking a concealed carry class, and somebody who has, is eight hours of required training. So would you be in favor of, you know, starting the movement to require more training to carry concealed weapons in public? To have a requirement.
Specifically for, requirement for who?
For someone to get a concealed carry license. For someone to get a concealed carry license, would you be in favor of them having more than eight hours of training to get the license?
Sure. I'm all, I'm all about training. I mean, I mean, I'm just saying, because.
Are you saying required?
I think she's wanting to up and above, up and beyond.
To change the requirement, to have a concealed carry.
Because the majority of the.
More than eight hours.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the majority of the training, of course, is, is legal stuff. It's all legal stuff as far as where you can carry, where you can't carry.
Sure.
The definition of deadly force, when it can be used, when it can't.
Right.
There's very, there's not a lot of training, other than demonstration of proficiency with a firearm on the line. Uh, if anybody's ever sat in one of my classes, I tout training all day long. You know, I say, if you're going to carry a gun for defense, how long should you train to be? For the rest of your life. You know, you can ask that deputy, he has to qualify every year to demonstrate proficiency and competence. So I absolutely, I'm always for training, yes, ma'am.
And I think that's, uh, you know, Commissioner Smith, to your point when you were highlighting, you know, some of the, um, results from the employee survey, I think that's where a lot of that came from, based on the feedback that I've gotten from employees. Not that they necessarily want to get a concealed carry, they just want to learn about it.
Yep.
You know? Um, and, and the ones that have learned about it, that, I think that's one of the issues that we have, you know? I mean, my job is, you know, the safety of everybody in Lee County as best that I can. And, um, you know, that, that is, I think, a legitimate concern for our employees is the difference between somebody with a concealed carry and not is just eight hours. You know, because.
Not, not necessarily. Now, understand, a thorough background check, FBI check, fingerprints run, mental health check.
But as far as training.
Problem is more proficiency with a firearm.
Yeah, but as far as training with that weapon, where if they fire that weapon, it's going to shoot their intended target and not an innocent person.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Um, and, and that's a serious concern. So, okay, I'll work on that and bring something like that back to the board.
Would that be a legislative change?
It would have to be.
Have to be.
It's a state law.
It would have to be.
I mean, there's some, just to say this, Madam Chair, don't mind, there, there are quite a few states, and I don't agree with it, that require no training for concealed carry.
I know that too, yeah.
But on the other side of the eight hours, I can't tell you how many people that come to my class that they thought you could shoot a trespasser and you cannot. They thought that you could shoot someone because they get in your face and call you names. And so I was very thankful that those individuals, at the end of the day, knew they couldn't do that.
Yeah.
People have their due diligence too.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
My daughter has to, has so many hours to drive, but then we take her and do her due diligence, because those are minimum hours. You don't want her driving on minimum hours. We take her on the road and train her even more.
And see, that's the point that a lot of people are making, is look at how much we require to operate a motor vehicle.
But don't be, don't assume that people that just get killed, seriously, don't, concealed carry, don't have more training.
Oh, right.
You know, and don't do their due diligence at home.
I understand.
At clubs and go out and, and get more proficiency. And I'd say the majority of them do.
Um, and, uh, you know, and to Commissioner Del Palazzo's point, um, you know, with respect to, you know, following the constitution, uh, and, and enabling people to conceal carry in our buildings, you know, state and federal buildings don't follow the constitution based on what you said. So, you know, uh.
And we follow those laws that are put in place. This ordinance isn't.
No, no, I'm talking about when you go to a building, a state building, or when you go to a federal building, you can't conceal carry. They don't allow you to. So, I mean, are y'all in favor of asking for them to allow that?
Yep.
Yes? Okay. All right, we'll work on that next time. Okay. And, and just a clarification, uh, to, from a workplace, um, that, giving you a chance to clarify, does your place of work allow concealed carry?
No.
Okay. I, I was, that was brought to my attention after your.
Well, no, rephrase that, rephrase that. Customers can come in, open carry, concealed carry, employees can't.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, well, uh, just clearing that up and trying to get some guidance for next time. I appreciate that. Saturday, we had a great event in, uh, Lee County in Sanford. Um, I got to go to the Sister City signing at City Hall with our Sister City in Mexico, Atitapan, and, um, their mayor couldn't come because she was sick, but the, um, Treasury Secretary came and his nine-year-old son and lots of other people, and whose titles I can't remember. But we had a great afternoon at City Hall and, um, have a new partnership, uh, with the Sister City in Mexico, which was wonderful. And tomorrow, uh, we will help host with, um, EDPNC at the Civic Center, um, the Energizing Rural NC two-day conference. So I think we've got 268, um, movers and shakers across the state that'll be here, um, as well as some dignitaries. So we're looking forward to that, you know, if we get a chance to swing by. So lots of good things happening. We've got a very busy week and the Triangle J Summit is in Chatham County on Thursday all day. So we'll be, um, partnering and working with our regional issues, um, with our regional partners on Thursday. So lots of stuff happening. But again, to reiterate, Commissioner Del Palazzo, yes, October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We've got our pink on, ladies and gentlemen, you know, look after each other and, um, and stay healthy. Based on our, um, our health report, breast cancer is going down in Lee County, so that's a good thing, so we're just going to keep issuing that message. All right, at this time, is there a motion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A5, to discuss the acquisition of real property.
Okay. Any questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, we're in closed session.